We're going to get started. It is a little after six and I thought, like I said, I want to start on time and end on time. Just a bit of housekeeping rules. You saw the sign outside that says it will be no cursing or no fighting. Because if you cursing and you fight, you will be expelled from the lives forever. Right? There's no weapons, right? All the weapons are outside. Okay, all right? You're going to expect everybody's time. This is sponsored by the Hernando County NAACP Youth Council. We do have our president here in the room. Give her a round of applause. One of our students, one of our residents, and her mom is here as well. And so you will be here from her and some other people as well. So what we're going to do, to be fair for everyone, we're going to give every candidate a moment, a moment, a 16-second elevator pitch. Oh, Pro Jack! Pro Jack got the time. So we're going to give everyone a 16-second elevator pitch to tell us who you are and why you are a person that we should consider voting for. Okay? And then we're going to get into the questions. We're going to hear questions from our president. And each of you will get an opportunity to answer to those questions. And then you'll have some other questions that will be specific, specific to your job or to specific to the office that you will be hopefully running if you certainly should get the chair. Is that all right? All right, so 16-second elevator pitch. And we'll start with to my right. And we're going to go right on down the line. 16-second elevator pitch. Go ahead, go.
My name is Mark Chilby. 25-year resident here in Hernando County. I'm a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. I retired in over one. And been here most of all that time. I've been captain for Delta Airlines for 21 years. What I see running for school board is team for leadership. I've been in leadership positions. I had hired a building wife. And I have a background in education in that. I got a bachelor's degree in environmental science from every rural across the state. And I got a doctorate in business administration. And I really believe that I bring extremely a wealth of experience and a wealth of leadership capability. My name is Mark Chilby, running for the district for 34. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Michelle Bondick. I'm running for the board this year for also. I've lived in the county 43 years. I have seven children, five now are going to school. Two that are still attending school. I have a bachelor in psychology. I have a master's in education law. As far as why I want to run, I'm running because nobody asked me really. Our children, my children, my grandchildren, and your grandchildren. There needs to be a lot of changes happening in our system the way it's seen right now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Frankie Davis. I'm running for Hernando County Tax Collector's Office. I grew up in Hernando County through a single mom. I am now raising my two children here who both attend the local public school, JD Lloyd. At 18, I left to go to Villalobos County to pursue Young Love. While I did find love, I also found my love for the Villalobos County Tax Collector's Office where I started in a customer-facing position and worked myself up to a leadership role. Like I said, chasing young love led me back to Hernando County. I got divorced, moved home, be closer to my mom about five years ago where I've since been. I continued the commute to Villalobos County, which took me out of home for about 12 hours the other day. About a year ago, made the decision that I need to be home to raise my children and not have somebody else raise my kids. I think we all know that struggle. I decided to run for office wasn't on my native part. It was a decision I made December or so after visiting the community county tax collector's office and taking an opportunity to make a positive change. Currently, the tax collector's office is involved with a community of a lot more. We're doing community events, kids tag art, announce someone in through Saturday hours. So our offices are serving you so you don't have to climb off the work. My name is Frankie Davis. I'm running for Hernando County.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Johnston, and I'm a candidate for Hernando County Property Appraiser. Had been devoted for the last 31 years to serving you in the property appraisers office. And I'm currently your assistant property appraiser. I'm uniquely qualified to prepare to lead with efficiency and expertise in this office. My extensive experience within, under three different property appraisers has provided me with the deep knowledge and understanding necessary for this role. From day one, I will ensure seamless operations and continuity with no need for on-the-job training. Your community deserves a leader who's ready to serve without pause, and that is me. On August 20th, your vote for me, Kevin Johnston, was a vote for proven leadership and for dedicated service. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pam Everett, and I'm running for county commission, District 5. I've been in the community for 35 years. I am a mom, a grandma, and an advocate. I have been giving myself to the community through advocating to IEP's, Bible, or special needs. I am one who will spearhead something if I see it's wrong. I was one of 14 in the state of Florida that was in a lawsuit against the FCAT. We went all the way to the Supreme Court to lose it on venue, nothing to do with testing. But if I see a problem, I am willing to step up. And I would like to step up and serve you as county commissioner. I see things that need to be changed. I'd like to be a part of that because I want to give. I want to hear what you have. I can sit up here and talk all day, but I need to hear what you want to serve you. And as your county commissioner, I believe it should be term limited to two years. I believe it should be a full-time job and be accessible to your community. Thank you, Pam Everett.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Alaco. I am running for reelection in Hernando County Commission District 3. I moved to Florida in 93 where I went to University of Florida to get my bachelor's degree in exercise and sports science. I got, I earned my master's degree at the University of St. Augustine in physical therapy. And then I moved to Hernando County to start my career. My wife here a few years later, and we opened up a business, a healthcare physical therapy clinic, and expanded to 15 employees here and in Asko County eventually. In my tenure, my focus has been on constituent service. My wife will attest to the number of hours I spend responding to email and phone calls every day. My healthcare background, I believe, was beneficial during the pandemic. We kept Hernando County open and our county commission meetings were available, open and live throughout the entire pandemic, unlike most other counties across the state. I believe that we need to protect our environment. I've worked hard to protect the Keyauqui River and put in an ordinance for fertilizer ordinances along the waterway. I think it's important to have a growth of, a safe growth of our economic opportunities for everybody to have a place to work and a career. But to do that, we have to have a safe community. I believe it's my responsibility to make sure not only that our first responders are safe, but that their families can count on their loved ones making it home every night after they finish their shift. I'd love your vote in August to continue this work. Well, thank you. God bless.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brendan Malo. I'm running for county commission, District 3. Our platform is based on empowerment. It's all about empowering citizens. We want to empower our citizens through economic development, living wage jobs, and affordable housing. We want to empower our constituency with constant communication, perpetual availability to teach you how to take part in your government. And we want to empower by continuing, my wife and I continuing our perpetual volunteering for Hernando nonprofit and save, discounting tons of tax dollars and help those less fortunate. Okay, a rising tide floats all boats. A little bit about my experience. I've got, I've been in state and local politics since 2001. I've got experience in three counties and two cities. See, and let's see a little bit about my, about my background. I'm a proud second generation Seminole, a proud sixth generation Floridian, a proud third generation Hernando resident, and a proud third generation war veteran who served the Marine Corps Desert Storm. My name is Brendan Malo, and I'm running for county commission, District 3.
And good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marvin Bead. I'm running for Hernando County Commission District 3. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Miami, Florida. I came to academia and athletics. I obtained a full basketball scholarship to go to the university where I played four years, obtained my bachelor's degree in child development. After that, I went down to Tampa. My wife was attending USA. And I started serving a nonprofit for two years in cooperation to develop the community in Tampa. There I sold various community projects and served projects, served leadership in the community. I was presented an opportunity to join fire department. I joined fire department. I've been there for temp fire rescue. I've been there for seven years. I'm currently lieutenant. And I just enjoy serving leadership. A little bit about our platform. So the first thing we want to work on is taxes. We want to ensure our citizens are not taxed out of their homes. We have a lot of senior citizens that are on fixed income. They cannot afford any more taxes. Second thing is listen and communicate with citizens. We have displayed that our leadership does not care, that is not listening to what citizens say. So we want to, you know, we have two ears, one now for a reason. We need to display to citizens we listen and their thoughts and values care and that to us. The next thing is advocate for growth as responsible for our community. As we all look around, we just see the destruction, trees cut, they're cut, and our infrastructure does not support our growth. I'm a firm believer in private property owners' rights. We all want to contribute on that. But I think if we come up with a plan that you can addively build and grow at the same time, I think it will be better for our community. Next thing is support our actions first of all. Me being a first responder, I understand the importance of supporting the augmented women that's ACFR as well as ACSO, and we can give them the resources they need and adequately serve our citizens. Last thing is we energize our community. That's the thing that don't cost anyone. I can get on this community. I can show that we break server leadership and build a brighter future for Hernando County as well. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I am Randy Missouri, and I'm working in Hernando County Property Appraiser. I'm running for this office because of the huge outcry from citizens asking me to leave the office towards conservative changes. I'm highly qualified to make these changes because experience matters. I have 30 years in the private sector. I'm a small business owner. I have 30 years as a local property appraiser. I am an entrepreneur. I'm a Florida State graduate. And I'm not a lifetime government employee. My vision to better the property appraisers office is to provide fair assessments for commercial and residential properties, to bring transparency and accountability back to the office, and to fight for lower taxes and incentivize property ownership. I am Randy Missouri. I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a Christian. And I'm a little leaker. I am proud to say that I was born and raised in this great county. The property appraisers office is in clear need of change, and I'm looking forward to serving with you to make those changes. Please vote for me, Randy Missouri, Hernando County Property Appraiser. Thank you.
If I have Amy Blackburn, my own resident tax collector. I'm currently the chief deputy of finance and administration there. And I have been working with Sally with Hernando County for the last six years. And I am just very happy for her to be with her entire and for her investment. It's very valuable. Thanks much. I'm also a certified local collector assistant through the Department of Revenue. I have lived in Hernando County for 20 years. I met my husband here. We're raising our family here. We're involved in community youth league. And I'm just looking forward to this opportunity. After traveling with a job for 18 years, 14 of which I was on the road Monday through Thursday, I'm looking forward. It was my three and a half-year-old at the time who thanked me for visiting one night. So I decided to try something else. Luckily, I found a job with the Board of County Commissioners. And I was working with them as a budget analyst for two and a half years. And then I've been hired by Sally at the tax collector's office. We're going to focus on four things. We're going to focus on efficiencies. Currently, the office is extremely efficient. We make only just over $7 million, and yet we return $3 million to the taxing entities and to the citizens of this county for other services. That, that is extremely tight, a tight budget we work with. But we're going to continue that as the county grows. I'm going to work on education, both internally with our staff and externally with our customers and our citizens, so that they know all the services we have and all the ways that they do the best they can. We're also going to talk about engagement, getting us back into the community as an organization. That's my number one involvement. I want to do that first. And then employee retention. We all know it's very hard to keep employees. So I want to help to develop a career path for them. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to serve you. So please vote for me in office, Amy Blackburn, tax collector. Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to hold my voice this time. Last time I spoke as a pre-range, no one could hear me. And during the middle of my speech, an elder man knows. No, he's not comfortable this time. Hope everyone can hear me. Thank you for having me. It's a true honor to be here. I love the fact that there's youth in the audience to hear this. So thank you for this opportunity. My name is Casey Hawkins. I am running for school board, District 2. I've lived in Hernando County for 18 years. I have three beautiful children, two that attend our schools locally and one that's in preschool. I also have a puppy dog who thinks she's a human and would probably go to school if I led her. I'm a former teacher. I have a master's degree in education with a reading endorsement, math endorsement, and an ESOL endorsement. I taught at Deltona Elementary, Explorer K-8, and in the state of Georgia. I taught at A-plus schools, and I taught at S-rated, like low, very low performing schools. The majority of my teaching career was performed in an inclusion classroom setting, meaning that I had students in my room with special needs. So I've seen diversity at its finest. I'm also an entrepreneur. I own a local business and have experience managing multimillion-dollar companies. I'm involved in several charity organizations and give back to the community whenever I can. I love Hernando County, and I'm very passionate about education. Watching what's happening lately in our school district is disturbing. We have some real major issues that need addressing, such as the shortages on teachers, qualified teachers, our transportation issues, mental health, and the list goes on and on. I'm running for school board for my children, your children, your grandchildren, and Hernando County's future. I am passionate to provide our children with the education they deserve. My top priorities are going to be to try to help resolve our transportation issues, digging deep into the budget to analyze where our money is being spent, revising the code of conduct, advocating for grants and funding for extracurricular activities and enrichment programs. And lastly, addressing the issue with the growths in this community and our schools. It's time for a solution, not just arguments and debates. I'm ready to work as a team to problem solve for real answers. We need to reset our focus on what's truly important, which is the success of our students now and the success of our students in their future. Let me be that voice for our children. Let me be the voice for our community. Let me try and help make a difference. Vote for me, Casey Hawkins, School Board, District 2. A mother, a former teacher, a business owner, and a community supporter. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Sullivan. Can you hear me all right? I am running also for school board, District 2. And as a taxpayer myself and a member of the working class, not the elites, I'm sure you're wondering about where our taxes are going and whether each dime is being spent in the best possible use for our schools and for our children. As a school board member, I promise transparency, intelligent budgeting, and the elimination of waste. Hernando County taxpayers deserve to be proud of our schools. I have extensive experience serving on successful boards. I come from a lot of teachers and greatly admire their self-investigation and work ethic. So I also, I'm a champion of kindness and fairness. I've served as a U.S. House and Senate lobbyist in Washington, D.C. to protect the environment like the Everglades and other crisis treasures that belong to American people. Their schools are crisis treasures. I have a proven track record of fighting against corruption, money, cronyism, and dishonesty in our government at every level that makes us feel powerless. I dedicate my life to changing that landscape. And I'm a community organizer who brings people together and casts divisions aside. I've chaired countless fundraisers. I've hosted and co-produced a local primetime interview show out of Tampa. And I've also done hosted radio programs out of Tampa and have enjoyed our listeners through music programs and covered them with conversation, which was called The Fairness Doctrine. That show was something that was taken away by Ronald Reagan. But fairness doctrine means you hear both sides of an argument instead of just what you're told and, you know, what you're supposed to believe. So I know how to inspire positive change. And I've also organized events, speaking events at the National Press Club in Chicago. I put on different, like solar power festivals and hunger walks and spearheaded many school fundraisers. So I'm in tune with you. I'll finish with this. I'm in tune with you. I have four school-aged grandchildren. I'm currently a coach in a middle school soccer team. And having stepped into the charge where no one else would, which is often what I do. I'm a former, also former Girl Scout leader, cookie mom, schoolroom mother, cheerleading coach, golf coach, art teacher, organizer of the Young Authors Program, and leader of revival class for teens. I earnestly dedicate my life to making the world a better place with an emphasis on kindness, freedom, community, and creativity. As a school board member, I will put this dedication to work for you, for our schools, for our children, for our parents, and for our future. Jennifer Sullivan, School Board, District 2.
I'm Joe Pugwierd. I've been living here since 1999, in Hernando County since 1991. Been quite a bit in Tom and Mark. I was a captain with United Airlines. You don't have that big question. I was a New York City police officer. I came on the job when I was 20 years old. From patrol, I went to the NYPD Aviation Unit. I got to fly in there at college for quite a couple of years. From there, I went on to United Airlines, type rating was 757, 767, 737. I was also a management pilot based in Chicago where I had responsibility for over 800 human hires to get through their first year of employment and probation. I'm running for sheriff because I want to deliver to you transparency. I want to be available to you. I want to hear your issues. And we're going to deal with the crime issues that are happening in this county now. There is explosive growth, and with that growth comes a certain element that brings some, some real bad things here in Hernando. So currently, I'm also a PHSC chief flight instructor. I run the aviation program for them, and I'm looking forward to being your sheriff.
I don't need this. Yeah. But now I, I really don't need a microphone. And in keeping with the rules, I'm setting my timer for 60 seconds. And because all the information that we've got here is all about what we're going to do come August, come November. And I'm here because, well, yesterday I decided to run for circuit judge. There's an open spot that covers five counties. I'm a Hernando County person. I worked right up the block on Main Street at the Brown Law Firm. But before I worked for Mr. Brown, I was a lifetime public servant. I was at the state for almost 20 years. And before that, just like some of the other people here, I was in law enforcement at a very young age. I've also had fire department ties because I was a volunteer firefighter, a paramedic. And I'm not going to take all your time up with that because I brought resumes that detail my education, my objectives, my volunteer experience, and all the awards that I received. One of them was from President Obama from FEMA for hurricane disaster relief. I'm very passionate about helping people when they're in need. So I, I've traveled all around the state and around the country at times, helping people when a disaster happens. Because in life, disasters happen all the time, whether it's in your own personal life, something bad happens and you need legal assistance. I went to college and law school all at night while working full-time because, you know, we all have to do, we have to do to get our credentials so that I can make sure that I know, I know the law. After all of these years in civil service and in the court system, been in a courtroom for 35 years, I've been in an office for about a year. It's time for me to get back to the courtroom. So I'm asking for your help, not only to vote for me, please read and share my information. And I also have forums for yard signs and all that. My opponents are in here. So I say, I'm the only one who cares today. I'm here. And I want, you guys to vote for me, and I need to just say this, because I know almost 90% of this room, so, and I know mostly I have my back. So I appreciate, I don't know what happened to my timer. I tried, but I'm Erin Daly, and make sure you tell everybody to vote for me in office.
Give the panel another round of applause. If you can raise, if you can, if you can. Time.
My name is Reverend Dr. Emory Ailes. I wear several hats. Senior pastor of Christian Baptist Church, worship right across the street in Sheriff's Community Center. Got a couple of my members here, Brother Joe Harris. I am also chaplain here, faculty elspeth. And I'm also the president of Lifeline University, which works right along with the NAACP Youth Council, of which I am the supervisor of. So now we're going to turn it over to our youth. We're going to hear from this president and another one of our youth. First, you get, you're going to get the opportunity to answer their questions. And then we're going to open it up to the floor and hear from the residents. At the end of the day, that's where, that's, that's who we are all here for, residents and conditions. And let's hope we can go and talk about some of the conditions here in South Pittsburgh and how we're going to address them. This president?
So this is for the county commissioners. What's more important for county right now? Building new homes on the north side of Brooksville and commercial spaces? Or is it moving to? Also extending South Brooksville?
This is for the county. This is for the county commissioners. What's more important for our county right now is building new houses on the
Is building new houses on the north side of Brooksville and commercial spaces? Or rehabilitating and expanding South Brooksville where rehabilitation is needed? These are for the county commissioners that are running the county. So, yes.
So before you start, make sure you understand, talk into my mic. You don't try to take my stage. By the protocol, you won't have a moment. All right?
Same time.
And you'll be in time. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's simple. I think we need to slow down on the west side. I mean, we're out of control there. We need to focus here. South Brooksville is in dire. We need to put our focus here, help our community members here. Because you are part of our community. You are one of us, and I want to serve in helping you get there. And by doing so, we got a lot of groundwork to cover to get the issues needed. We got property lines that are out of whack. We need to, we need to fix a lot here. And we need to start at the bottom. And to start there, I need to hear what you have to give me to go on the research board.
Thank you. I don't think they're mutually exclusive of each other. The county doesn't build new buildings. So those are going to come as people move to the state. And I think it's important for us to make sure we have impact fees that are appropriate so that we can help expand the infrastructure as needed. When it comes to South Brooksville, what we have done so far is we've actually worked with the city. We've worked with South Brooksville residents, and we have approved a CRA. That's a community redevelopment agency. And we're working with the city to make sure that we expand that so that you can get the resource that you need. The county has actually hired a full-time employee to just focus on CRAs now. And so there's only two CRAs in the whole county. That's going to be South Brooksville and Cass Circle. And our focus is obviously on South Brooksville because that's what we need the most.
Okay, so the question is kind of twofold about redevelopment for South Brooksville. Yes, and housing versus on this end of town versus somewhere else. Okay, as I spoke about, my, one of the intents of my campaign is workforce talent. Okay, so that's part of it. And I understand that there's a call for revitalization of South Brooksville. Many of you, your veins have been here for many generations. And what I like about the possibility of the government being able to come out with this is because we have the press and we can chat circle revitalization. And if I were living in South Brooksville, my reaction would be, hey, we did it up there. Those are probably the residents, our people that have been here for generations. We deserve it too. Okay, I'm gonna be on board with that. Okay, I'm gonna do my best. Part of my platform is to see what I want to do is learn about the grant system, right? And work with folks like Raven Ailes, Kindred Green, Del Harms, we're sponsoring Lunch Bring Tomorrow. Carl over there, Sensei Carl off the road to help everybody in this area. And just satisfy whatever they want. Like I said, I'm basically here, I'm actually the best. I'm not gonna come in and try and take the lead on anything because that's not my place. I'm going to come in and do what you all ask me to do, and I'll always be available for the moment.
I think the issue extends upon all these things we brought up. I think it's at a point past that we created all these new CRAs where we need people that's actually going to be willing to do the work. So we can hire all these employees, get all these plans, get all these consulting. Well, we don't have to do no work. All that means nothing. So I think the community needs to come together and understand where they want to go and protect that for leadership and have leadership go get you the resources that you need. And then if it's not getting done, I will get out in the community and we'll do it ourselves. We don't need nobody to come save us. We have to take advantage of this community. And South Brooksville has to make one's impact within the community.
As for county commissioner, if elected, what three steps we need to take to put our county on firm financial footing? Fifty seconds.
Well, we first have to start with transparency. We need to open the books to all departments. I want to say there's forty departments, five commissioners. Why not divide it up and look over eight of them at a time? And actually bring to the community where we stand financially on them. And then fix the deficits that we have going on. And when we got wasteful spending, let's, let's tone it down. But it starts with transparency. We've got to see where we stand in each department and bring it towards the goal of making it balanced. And taxes, as much as we don't like them, we got to figure out where our tax dollars are going. And balance that also. So we as community members are not footing the bill when there's money sitting there. So we need to balance it, look where we're going, and basically fix it.
When I first got elected, the county was actually going in a negative direction. Since then, we have actually increased our bond rating at every level. The county is always in a balanced budget. Sometimes we have a higher, we have a higher reserves. And our reserves are now at the highest level they've been ever at this point in time. We've also been able to reduce your millage rate four years in a row during the highest inflation rates in fifty years. I would say the county is in good, is on good footing right now. I believe the question seems to almost be going back to the community as a whole. And the way to do that is to improve the economic position of the county. That brings more education that are going to be in trades-related and certificate-type programs, which are going to allow people to, who aren't necessarily going to go to college for four, six, or eight years, are going to have an opportunity to make good money in trades or professions that require certificate programs. We have the, one of the things we're doing is the Dr. Wilfong Center for Citizen Success, where we're working with the school system, with Pasco Hernando State College and the county to bring in certificate programs, more trade training, so that people can be able to support their families with hopefully one job instead of two. And then the third thing is transparency is there. And I would encourage anybody to go and look at the budget. It is completely listed online. You're able to look at that if you have questions. Obviously, reach out to your county commissioners. Thank you.
So thank you for that great question, young man. I think that's the most important issue that we're facing in Hernando. As I spoke about in my opening remarks, my castle already is empowered. At the top of that, platform is economic development. Okay, this is how we get everybody on firm footing. It's not necessarily more funding, it's empowering people. Okay, living wage jobs. We need to get industrial development in here for two reasons. One thing, of course, is the living wage jobs. We have, as John alluded to, we have great training programs. Whether you wanted to go to college, location, incubators coming. Okay, but we need to get that industrial development in here for another reason that I feel we need to think more about, which is the ad-halum taxes that it will run by potentially. Okay, because if we get more ad-halum taxes from, in the future, from industrial development, that's going to add off any forced increase in our personal ad-halum taxes in the future. So that will be my solution, get Hernando on foot. Once again, living wage jobs and affordable housing. Thank you for your question.
So I believe in being proactive instead of reactive. Right now, you might be sounding the county, but every, all those citizens when I go on a campaign trail are facing tough economic time. With that in mind, we have just presented a one cent for Hernando for twenty-nine years. I don't want my kids subjected to a tax for twenty-nine years. So I think we need to forensically study our budget and really see where we can save these citizens because people cannot afford it. You have elderly citizens that have been attacked out of home, have to relocate if they're lifetime citizens. So I think it's very important that we truly examine a budget, see where we can not place further taxes on the citizen. Because we also have $600 million in trust fund as well. So we need to really narrow down the budget and make sure moving forward in our future that we are secure and financially efficient.
It's going to be expanded to not only include the county commissioner, but also property tax and property appraiser.
So just so everybody is clear, the Tax Collector's Office does not set the millage rates. They collect the property taxes as per sent back to the taxing authorities. However, with that being said, I would like to introduce Saturday. I know I mentioned that previous. The Tax Collector's Office operates off of fees collected by transactions. So right now, we have residents who are commuting to Pinellas, they're commuting to Paso, Citrus, Hillcraw, and they're doing these transactions in other counties. We don't collect that money. That money stays with them. As mentioned, the Tax Collector's Office gives their excess budget that we collect back to your board of county commissioners and taxing authorities. Increasing these fees that we can retain would give them additional money to look for an alternative other than the millage rate, the sales tax. This is essentially a part-time job that we can be adding to somebody's budget. So it's not a full-time expense. It is a part-time job and added money, just like some of us are taking that job. This is another option to give them more money, which is not on the table right now.
Very similar to the Tax Collector's Office, the property appraiser does not levy taxes. What our main focus is, is to establish fair market value as of January first each and every year. The county commission and the school board are the ones that actually levy your property taxes. One thing I am committed to is providing fair and equitable assessments to all residents of South Brooksville and Hernando County in accordance with the laws of the state of Florida. One thing I would like to point out is that over, we have over one hundred twenty-seven thousand parcels in Hernando County. Last year, we had three hundred fifty-six petitions filed to the people that were contesting our determination of fair market value. Of those, that equates to less than three-tenths of one percent of all properties felt that their values exceeded fair market value, which I think is a true testament to the job the property appraiser in this office has been doing, providing fair and equitable assessments.
What we need to do is come up with a plan. How do we keep our people in their homes? We need to come up with a plan of health grants. Taxes are going to be paid. We're gonna, we're gonna die paying taxes. But we need to be fair about them, and we need to be consistent on what we do. It's a community problem that we need, we are facing. And I don't think anybody should be put out of their home. We need to come up with a solution. Do I have that answer yet? No, I don't. But working together, we can come up with a plan to help people stay in their homes.
The only way to decrease the burden on ad-halum taxes is to diversify your tax base. One of those ways to do that is by increasing impact fees on redevelopment. I've been an advocate for four years for that. We have not, not been able to get the rest of the board to agree, but it will be there soon. The other thing is to add new commercial. Commercial doesn't typically put the same expenses on our, on our school system or on our, you know, libraries, parks, things like that. That's another way to do that. And then the last thing is to continually be able to reduce the millage rate over time. To do that, again, diversifying your tax base. You know, I had somebody talk that they didn't care for the sales tax, but the sales tax is the most broad tax because you get to determine what you want, what you're going to buy, and how much your board can pay. And by doing that, about thirty percent of the taxes that will be collected in Hernando County would be collected as sales tax by people who don't even live here in Hernando County. Who are just visiting. And so that's another way to diversify the tax base. Okay, but ad-halum taxes are only going to be, are going to be based off of the value of your home. Unfortunately, we're seeing record increases in property values here over here. I believe we're going to see that flatten and probably decrease, and that will help. But commercial, a broadened tax base, impact fees, those are the best ways to reduce your ad-halum taxes.
As I say, how are we going to keep the property taxes down? How are we going to keep them from skyrocketing? For this property. And I've got two things in mind for that. Once again, we talked about industrial development, okay? Not only is that going to produce living wage jobs, but it's going to produce a lot of ad-halum taxes. Okay, and that's very important, it's just as important as the form. Okay, also, I'm a big advocate of sales tax, okay? That doesn't mean let's go crazy with it. But I feel it's the most fair and least painful way to raise money. And it's also, you have to come to the citizens and ask for, you have to ask their permission, okay? And I feel that paying the extra penny on every dollar you spend is a lot less painful than trying to deal with an ad-halum tax increase. So once again, those are my two solutions, increasing industrial development and a sales tax rather than ad-halum. Thank you.
I think elected officials are elected for a reason, to make a tough decision. So if I go to the grocery store and I go buy something that's, I go to the, bring up my groceries, and it's a hundred dollars, and I don't have that money, I cannot be the worst seller of the grocery. So the same thing with county. We have to prioritize and categorize what's important and what's not important. And no way, shape, or fashion, form should be placed further or inverted on citizens. And just ensure we don't pass any of these things down to us.
Okay, to try to keep the taxes down, you have to you file for homestead and save your homes. That'll take fifty thousand dollars off your assessed value. Okay, and that caps what your taxes can go up per year. Okay? The biggest thing is accessibility to the office. If you have a problem with what you think your property is valued at, you got to come, be able to come see us and talk to us about that. And then we can look at that and determine how to proceed from there. That is the only way. The property appraiser doesn't set the millage rate. That's, that's something with the county. And all we do is assess the value and then put the millage rate to that value. And that's the tax that you pay. So the biggest thing is accessibility. I mean, we can't just cut taxes, I mean, across the board just without any reason. But if your property is unfairly assessed, we can address that. Thank you.
Hi, Heidi, with the Tax Collector again. So lowering taxes, like it was our, if the tax level is not assessed, we just distribute. We collect and distribute. Now, we hit two hundred and ninety-three thousand transactions last year for motor vehicles. We only made seven hundred thousand dollars on that. So what I'm saying is to be self-sufficient and to create, we are efficient. But of course, you have to focus on the transactions that you, in the revenue from your office, and that is how you keep everything well. And that is for us, taxes. We brought in six point four million in tax fees last year, and that's how we're able to operate self-sufficiently and give back three million dollars to the taxpayers. Thank you.
It pains me to watch them struggle a little bit to tell you how we're going to save money. But let me tell you how I'm going to save money. I'm running for sheriff. Three hundred million is from my opponent, so guess what? I'm not going to use it. There's your money, man.
I think with taxes, we have to be proactive in thinking about it. Because property values have skyrocketed.
I think with taxes, we have to be proactive in thinking about them because property values have skyrocketed in Hernando County. And I think that we need to look at the taxes that run up astronomically, and when we look at, when we look at the impact fees, they've gone nowhere. So when your taxes go up, I mean, I know in some locations, people have seen two, three hundred, four hundred percent increase. We haven't seen any of that in impact fees. So I think we need to make it for the dollars that is going the most, which is the realtors and investors. So we need to piggyback on top of that. We're not supposed to be piggybacking on residents of Hernando County, so I think the impact fee need to go up. And maybe we should see the miller rate go back down. Thank you.
We are doing excellent. We have another question that is going to be for the school board and education. But before we do that, I just want to say if you have to use a restroom, the restrooms are like to my mouth. Then, then you need to take a break, anything like that, you need some But while we are on fire, because I've invested and I've had five, ten years here in this particular community. There appears to be an issue with property lines and the residents being able to build construction for the past ten years. I have not seen any from understanding like this, including more toy and one that they thought there's been a lot of gerrymandering going on there. If the resident, if they're not in the property, they can't build it up, so the property lines are overthought. So let us get back to that property line, how are we gonna fix that? Because I understand that's been a problem for a long time. You can ask any person in here about which, where is South Brooksville or where the lines are, and you'll get fifty different answers. So how are we gonna fix the gerrymandering and the property line structure here in South Brooksville so that my resident, you're gonna hear from him tonight, can rebuild their homes and not be penalized, not say, and not be allowed to build again?
I'm not familiar with the issues that you're describing, but one thing I would like to say with property lines, most everything in South Brooksville has been recorded in an original plaque. So the plaque determines the dimensions of the lots, the location of lots. If you're referring to our GIS property appraisers office, those maps are not used for survey purposes, say, or for informational purposes only. But one, one thing with, with South Brooksville that's unique is your split almost in the middle between county and city. So you, you're dealing with two different building departments. You're dealing with county building department and the city building department. So with that said, most permits that I'm aware of are done just by parcel number or key number, not necessarily by where the lot line lies on a map. So if there is an issue with the property line, a lot of times that can be eliminated by providing a survey. Sometimes when it profits, refinanced, when it's purchased, or for whatever reason, if we have a survey, we can adjust our maps to reflect those current surveys. All right, so we are in the process and have been for several years of going throughout the county, and I can't say that we focus on one area versus the other. But we have gone through the county picking up GPS points that allow us to set these lines so that our map lines more or less line up with the actual property. I'm gonna hear some more. Anybody else want to respond to that?
First hand.
She's watching a movie.
Have houses that are sitting on two properties. When they can't, they can't remodel, they can't build, they can't tear it down. They are sitting literally on two properties. What we need to do is take back and look at the entire area. And we may have to redraw lines, but we can redraw. There's no reason we cannot redraw those lines to fit the housing that is in South Brooksville. Because most of the houses are not sitting on separate parcels. They are crossing lines. Those houses have sat there for years and years. Those lines were not drawn to those houses. And if I was probably go back far enough, there probably was no parcel lines when those houses were built. So we need to take into consideration our neighbors. And we got engineers that can take a pencil and draw some lines. We need to re-map it to fit the community.
So there are homes that are on two properties based off of the legal definitions and the deeds, okay? The government that can go and just rewrite people's property lines as a government, you're gonna need to be very cautious of. Okay, it's a legal process there. It's not easy. It's not something you can just do with a snap of your fingers. Okay, the first step is this development of the CRA. So now you can get some other funds in there, but there has to be buy-ins from everybody who owns a piece of property because that property is your legal property. It's a legal deed on there. Again, be cautious of the government that should just go in and rewrite property lines on there because that's a government you should be afraid of. It is not easy. That's why it hasn't been done yet. It will take someone like you, Pastor Ailes, and the community around to get together, and it's probably gonna take attorneys. Okay, it's, it's, it's gonna be a challenge. It can be done, but there has to be buy-in from the whole community because one person who doesn't want anything to change about their property lines, and now you're gonna need an authority. Okay, this is not a government, government issue, a local government issue as far as changing. We can help you, and that's part of, again, working together with the community and coming up with the CRA concept. Starts against maybe some other funding mechanisms besides just ad liborum tax to be able to help in that situation.
Hey, Reverend Aros, on this issue that you're speaking about, I'm simply not well versed in it. If this is properly rated, set, what can I promise you is that I'm always going to be honest. Okay, can you promise you that I'm always gonna be available? And I can promise you that my mind is always gonna be open to your concerns. If you tell me that, okay, this is the problem, I can, I can promise you that I am going to dig in through it and do the best that I can to do this.
Darderos, you personally came to me with a challenge that you've been fighting for, for how long? Two years, three years? Right?
Longer than that.
Longer than that, right?
Yes, to your problem, and I needed to respond it. We, we'll get it done, right? So I'm about, you present a problem to me, whatever it takes within legal, within rights. I wanted to work with you, work with the community, and come up with a solution.
The property appraiser doesn't determine property lines. It's determined by legal descriptions and plaques. So in surveys, so the best way to determine where these property lines are, are surveys. You know, and maybe we could do, get some government assistance to determine, to help survey. That's the only way to determine where these property lines really are, where they should be. By survey markers and things that have been set up back, yeah, I mean, before, when Brooksville was nothing but dirt rich. So what we need to do is try to get some surveys. The GIS system is for informational purposes only. It always will be that way in every county. It has a disclaimer on there stating that this is not for legal use. So that's the way that I look at it, that we have to determine it, and it's gonna have to have the city and the county work together. Thank you.
Now, the next question is going to be to education. You know that there's been a lot of talk about D E I, diversity, equity, inclusion. Thank you, Commissioner, a lot, a lot with the people talking about diversity in taxes. And, you know, a lot of things have been banned, you know, based on diversity, equity, inclusion. Let me just define diversity, equity, inclusion. Diversity and equity inclusion, it encompasses all of those who perhaps maybe have a disability. I'm glad that we have individuals that, you know, are disabled here. Because when we cut off D E I, we're cutting off resources for those who are disabled as well. So this question is for our education department and going into the disabling, what they may have for that. So come on to this. Can't understand what you said. So we need to go. College students get a better learning experience, they pay for them. Better than I E P or full.
Okay, so an I E P and a five oh four drops after high school. You do get accommodations in college, but you have to go and apply. It's not like it transfers over, like kindergarten through K through twelve. You're going to have that I E P, five oh four, whenever you start it, it's just gonna continue. Unless for any reason, make sure that you have exceeded and do not, no longer need it. More so on the five oh four than the I E P. Usually an I E P will carry with you all the way through to high school, to the upper grade. You can bring it into college. So what I can tell you is, and I don't know too much about colleges with the five oh four, because none of my kids know either that or an I E P. But as far as when you reach middle school, at a middle school level, at a high school level, I can tell you that our schools slow that giving the kids the accommodations that they need to succeed. It's a fight. So if parents don't know how to fight the system or how to go and say, hey, my kid isn't getting that, the combinations aren't there, and you will see kids falling behind. No different than the no child left behind that. We put that in, and we leave children behind because we put in a program in our schools that say, hey, if you don't know five oh four, well, guess what? Last four weeks, last four, we're gonna push you through. We're gonna teach you real quick, and you're gonna pass. That's what we're doing right now. So we're really leaving our kids here. And that's one of the biggest things that I am an advocate for is yes. I have a child, I've had two children in the system that have five oh fours and I E Ps. I've had one that's had major medically fragile. And I thought when I worked the system, I used to have to take my badge off, walk in the office, and you know, I'm not here as a teacher, I'm here with him. So, yeah.
So let's just take that here for a minute and alleviate all the other, uh, people. So if we ask them, uh, is what are we going to do?
To fix it?
Yes, that question.
Well, so we put a lot, I didn't, I didn't say that. So we put a lot of programs in our system in our schools. And here's the thing, like, we have I R A D, we have kids that can't read, so we put them on I R A D, I R A D computers. And we have a classroom teacher that has all the computers and they sit there in their I R A D. And then we look at this data and say, well, how did they do? Well, I can tell you right now, most middle school kids, when they get to that, they don't care. They're going, like, 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 like. Instead of sitting down, now, when I taught, I taught almost twenty years ago, so we sat down at a table and read with them. Make sure, be sure they and again, we need more staff. That's a big problem. So we need to get back to that. Like, focus on our kid, not, here's a computer, sit in front of it, I'm gonna look at this data. When you have teachers that can sit down with kids and actually read them out loud and say, okay, he needs help with this, this, and this, we're not doing that for our children.
I really believe the question was for college, correct?
Yes, it's, it's mentioned college, but continue on in that.
Okay, so I think it was an individual education plan, and I can vouch for my nephew, who was born pretty much not breathing. They had to revive him, and all the way through school, he needed an I E P. And when he graduated, like she said, they stopped it, but we went and we bought for him and was able to provide him in college services, T D, such as more time for test-taking, not reading like on the computer, just extra stuff to help him. And he has graduated college and has been very successful. I think that most importantly, we just have to educate our children and our parents to know that these services are available as far as college goes.
Yeah, I think it's a lot to do with awareness, and I think that's an important job for the school board to make children aware and parents aware of what goes where. And we do have, most of our advisors in schools, this year restarted with students, we were over a hundred and forty teachers short. My daughter-in-law teaches, she teaches in, in a class where kids are, you know, starting preschool, some of the kids are wheeled in. They're not even, they can't even sit in a chair, they're on a scratcher. So she's in there, she's short help. So to try to organize things like this, we need a school board that's going to be recognizing other problems. And right now, we just lost the administrator, you know. Or, well, it was, yes. And so we have this concentrated effort to take on our public schools. And I am for public schools. I am for the public, and I'll tell you this. You know, we have these things at these schools that you, you get a, from the government, you can have a charter school, and that gets tax dollars, and that's not correct. They shouldn't do that. If they're gonna have a school like that, there's more profit. You know what's happening. The profit is going to the administrators, the owners, the bankers, whoever's invested in that school. It's not gonna go to the students. So the public schools are where it's at. We need to bring them back. We need to, you know, empower the public schools. So that kids can, I mean, I, I've been to a lot of different countries. That's what I do in my spare time is travel. And I've been, I'll tell you this, the country of Nicaragua, I was there last, like, last January. They have free education from preschool through grad school for everyone, and also trade school. Why can't United States of America have that?
As far as I E P goes, I don't know a lot about it, but I do know what the elephant in the room is as far as teacher retention and teacher hiring and the classroom environment, right? We've had teachers come to the podium, active teachers, and go, I'm dumbfounded by the lack of courtesy and respect. We're losing teachers because of it. So we're gonna be hiring teachers either for that same reason. So we have a, we have a issue right in the classroom environment. That's one issue. Courtesy and respect in that classroom. And I'm not talking about all students. There is a percentage of students that are disruptive and causing problems for teachers, and we're not dealing with it properly. Okay, I've been there, I've been traveling the state a little bit to see what A plus schools do. And if A plus schools handle this issue, why can't we, okay? And there's, and it's leadership issue, but I think, okay, the teachers, one teacher came to the podium and said, the administration isn't backing us. And I'm kinda like, well, I'm sitting there going, if they're not backing you, then they're not doing their job. Okay, so we have a systemic problem if we're gonna retain teachers and hire good teachers with the classroom environment. So it might be a sense on what we need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. If you feel like this thing that we have to think, uh, we could raise the terminal to, uh, what we do around, what they can do on Friday this morning. I think I'd raise the table and turn it over to the, uh, the audience. In education and doing this particularly on teaching retention. And attention, particularly in the African-American context. Because we are in American literature, and we're going to talk about African-American issue. It's authentication. There's been a lot of banning of books and things like that. And African-American history is being erased uh, modified. My question for the education department goes to the school board. What will you do to ensure will have to bridge them when they conceive themselves in a positive light? That would be more empowering as opposed to dissing the school board? Or any, what anyone would like to say?
I'm all for that because it's very important that we have reparations in many different forms. And it's, it's not that, you know, it's just a simple thing of like respect. We were talking about respect. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's not hard to do. And I don't think anyone feels guilty about learning about history because they didn't do it. So we should, we teach the true history. We should teach about Native Americans. We should teach about African-Americans and that's a true history in this country. So I think I would be very much in favor of promoting as much as we possibly can, given the governor that we have. But, you know, I'm going to be there to try to do what we can in Hernando County. And yeah, banning books is something that that could have been handled a whole different way. They could have had people review them and just have a review board and you deal with it, then, you know, then we can make advisings to the school board instead of making, school board meetings last forever. But in any case, that is something that can be handled and we should handle it. And I would, school board too.
I'd like to say something. I think the problem is starting with where we get our value. Okay, and you have to remember, I'm, I'm going to say it, you may not believe this, okay? I, my value comes from the Lord created. Okay, it starts there and then it starts in the home. And the problem we're running into right now is we're expecting the government to raise our children and to raise our, you know, and our grandchildren. And, and instead of playing the role, the school system has a place. The college system has a place. Okay, but if we're getting our values from, from the wrong place, there's no system that's going to fix that. And I think we have to get back to that. I think that's a big problem here. We need to focus on, we need to be focused on what makes you valuable, what makes you valuable in our society. Okay. And I, there was a statement earlier about Nicaragua and I thought it was a good statement, okay? I think the challenge in the school system is right now, you go to a place like Nicaragua, based on what was said, school is a, is a right all the way through to a certificate program or college. But, but I bet you that is viewed as a privilege. And if people put the time and the effort in here, here we have the opportunity to go to school for a very long time in many cases. But we think the degree or the diploma is a right and we don't have to. So there's got to be a balance there. Obviously, when we're dealing with people with disabilities, it's a totally different situation. But we're not going to improve the value of people by making it easier to get a degree or a certificate. We've got to make sure, we got to make sure they're getting their value from the right place.
So to answer the question, I view the board African-American, um, history being in our curriculum and textbooks. And how will I support or ensure that that's going to happen? Well, on the board, we have committees that review the curriculum. I'm very familiar with lots of curriculum as a former teacher. I will go onto those committees, I will review the curriculum. And as long as it follows state, state or state law, then I will approve it within reason. Um, if it's not appropriate, then I have to be, I have to uphold the law. But there's no reason that American, African-American history should not be in our textbooks. It's part of history, um, just like Native Americans, just like the Holocaust. I mean, I support that it should stay in our curriculum. Thank you.
I'm not a teacher, I wish I was.
Well, a judge, you may be a judge.
I would like to be a judge one day and I don't, that's, that's really important. But it's really, um, having, I grew up in a big city. So I saw being in a courtroom when I was a young person, there was a lot of colored, um, I don't know, people, but like the.
Diversity.
That, no, no, it was not diversity.
No.
It was a terrible situation where African-Americans were, were a, a majority of the defendants and they were not a majority of the people. And I understand having a law enforcement background that sometimes people are not treated the same because of the color of their skin or their disabilities. And it has happened throughout history. And we are thankful, oh, Lord, we are in 2024 where it is a different perspective, especially among young people.
Yeah.
So whatever we have suffered through in our lives and seen in our lives, it is so important that our children understand that human beings are all equal. One thing that I really would like to impart though about all this experience and the court is that here in Hernando County, we have an amazing program called Youth Board. Where children ages of 10 and 17 can volunteer. And I've been a judge for the Youth Board for 15 years now. And I mentor and I train youth on how to become attorneys and giving them the confidence to speak up for themselves and to speak up on behalf of other people. It doesn't matter what your race, your religion or your disability is. If you have powerful mentors, no matter who they are, to, to, in the community, to deal with young people's dreams and hopes. That's really important is being able to make sure that we mentor all children. And they, they know that there are all sorts of opportunities to them, to them, that there, there is no such thing as, as two races, because we're one race, human race.
I agree with this woman 110%. She hit it. I'm on the book banning. Ban books because we call them woke. It gives different perspectives on some things. And I read too that were written by African-American men. And we banned them. It gave a different perspective. We have good, we have bad. We have good cop, bad cop, good doctor, bad doctor, good teacher, bad teacher. We have all kinds. And the story was, it gave a different perspective of a bad cop. Because it's a bad cop, it became woke and we removed it. But the story actually had a pretty good ending. Because even though this child was abused, he still wanted to be an officer. He still wanted to go to the Marines. He still, it was a good story. It gave a story of the bad sides of our country. We have good, bad. We don't need to erase the bad. We need the bad to wake us up, see what's wrong. So I, I was, I will tell you, I did not ban that book, your school board did. I want the good, the bad, the ugly to be brought out. And we have to, so we can learn from it. And if we don't learn, we're not working to repeat it.
Eric, what I want forced to part with. I intend to bring body cameras on board. There will be body worn cameras, uh, under the statutory chapter 30. That's up to the discretion of the sheriff. I also plan on being out there and being part of the community. I don't plan on being a bean count, uh, sitting behind a desk all day long. I plan on being very active in what goes on in our law enforcement. And you'll have access to me and I'll address your needs.
This is African-American history in schools, right? So, okay, you want to speak to that?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
I have a real problem. I believe in American history. American history incorporates everything that we've been through since the inception of America. When I was little, I asked my mom, what ethnic group am I? You know, my dad's Italian, my mom is Irish. She goes, oh, you're American. And the reason I ask is because I'm adopted. Biological parents. I could be 112, but I'm American Indian. I could be any number of things. Obviously, I've got white skin, but that was transcended by the fact that I'm American. So I don't know what my ethnicity is. To the point over here, somebody said, well, what race? That's the way I look at it. That's the way I'm going with it. That's the way I've always gone with it because unlike most people in this room, they got a heritage based on their ethnicity that they can trace biologically. Never had that. That's why I was from the get-go when affirmative action was taking place in the seventies when I was in college. I had, I won't tell you what agency it must be. I was applying to give scholarship, he goes, uh, what's your, what's your ethnicity? And I go, I, you know, I don't know, I'm adopted at birth. I don't, I don't know what my, my. He goes, you can be American Indian. I, I, I'm, I'm, like. But the point being is, I find it in some respects, it's slightly, the way we do this. And the way I, it's American history and it's includes the African experience, it includes the Italian experience. It includes the American Indian experience. That's what makes us American. My, it's one of the, um, I think. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Umani Estelle, a native, Roseville resident, Pasco County. At Long Island, I do have test attendance in the county. I worked at Pasco, Hernando State College for 34 years. Um, and, um, just have a couple of questions I want to ask first. Wanted to ask John, is this very exciting in the CRA? So I know the city was doing some things for housing and they drew some lines of different, and they're trying to prove this threat.
The city and the county came together, worked together to create the CRA with the community. And so it will be a county, city of Roseville.
Um, there's one I wanted to, to, um, that, um, for the school board, you know, candidates, I'd like to just know what you are looking for, uh, in your next superintendent, if you are elected. What are the values, uh, are the characteristics, uh, leadership traits that you would expect to have in the superintendent? And just in closing, I would just say that it's more about cultural infusion. So to take a position on education and diversity in the middle of the road is to mean that you don't stand for anything. And I just want to know, um, if you disagree with the position the governor has taken, will you go along with the governor? Or would you oppose that position based on what John was talking about, about character and your own personal values?
Why don't you jump on this one? The thing that, to your point, what I want most in the next superintendent is leadership. Okay, I want leadership, this knows right from wrong. Follows the law, follows the regulations. I spent a few years in aviation, I follow the regulations. A scenario where I don't think they follow the law. Straight out tight. And so I don't care, like, I don't care if they're male or female. I, I, I just really want some leadership and I really want it for the teachers' benefit. Because the number of teachers that are having issues in their classroom is, is, uh, I'm dumbfounded to use the word of a teacher, that they're having these issues in the school. I know someone that appeared with the school, everybody knows cops on campus. What are you looking for? Leadership first and foremost, all right? You take that to the bank and I want to see that leadership before we hire them, I think. And I'm not buying the hiring process. I don't know how that's going to fall. And do you oppose the government position or not hold diversity and what you think? Sorry, but I don't know exactly what his position is, but I'm not, I'm not a big fan of D E I. Okay, I can say it straight out. I want meritocracy. Okay, when I see a professional who's been historically wrong by statute and law, given one individual advantage over another person historically by law, then you're talking about meritocracy? No, no. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. I, you know what I want? I want the same thing professional sports have. I want the best people to excel. I want to, I, you know, I want to play college football. I wasn't good enough, you know? I, I want to play, you know, I want to run track for a, a college team. I wasn't good enough. But I want the best people on the field. I want the best people in our school, I want the best leadership we get. I just want the best. In that. But for not to fall for this huge, you know, career. So, you know, go both and so you're not wrong.
All right, so move on. Anyone else want to, from the board, want to answer that question?
Well, yes, I oppose the governors and this is a nonpartisan race. So, but yeah, I oppose his views on many things. Uh, but I will say that administrator, that's what I look for is administrative skills. Well, I mean, I would hope that they were going to be looking for that diplomatic experience, ability to listen to the community, the teachers and the parents. And managerial, managerial, managerial aptitude. Basically that, you know, they need to be able to handle the budgets, handle what's going on in schools. So that's their job. And then teachers teach.
As far as superintendent, um, they need to be able to connect at all of these. As far as superintendent, they need to be connected to all of this. So he's the only connected to school, partially he's the only connected to this administration team, his children in this school and parents. I don't know if they can believe that or if they're going to believe you have, um. As far as inclusion, as far as the Santa's inclusion, I feel that every child, no matter what they are or how they are, should be entitled to go to brick and mortar, should have the same ability and the same access to everything every other child has. Whether it be every, I this school, that school, this school. You should have access to everything that every child has, or everybody has the best. Not just, oh, if you get into this school, you get to go. That shouldn't happen, it shouldn't be that.
The qualities I would look for in a superintendent would be, uh, background, uh, knowledge of education, a strong leader, passionate to make a difference in our community. And I would like to see someone actually possibly not in our community because I feel like regardless of who they bring in, the left side, the right side is going to have a problem with that person because there's going to be a background. Yeah, and it's going to cause more drama. So for me, I honestly would like to see somebody with experience as a superintendent. Um, you have to support the teacher emphasis experience. I don't always support everything he chooses to do, however he looks at it. Um, but remember, I have to follow his law. I have to do as being said.
Well, that means you oppose.
Oppose to, to infusion.
Do you like it?
Maybe I don't understand your question. I tell you, I do support diversity in our school for sure. I believe that every child should be given equal opportunity. I taught special needs children, I've taught, I've taught the children that had parents in prison. I can tell you that when, that I've taught in A plus schools, very bulky families. And I can tell you, there is a difference. Yes, there is a difference between.
Probably didn't like it.
Background, you know, that's.
You support teaching that rock, names are heroes and monsters, seeing as those monsters.
I don't. You are, that is a sad thing. Thank you.
This is excellent. Thank you.
I believe in teaching in the back, not putting out.
That we're going to do this again. So this is the first, this is the first candidates forum of three. So we're going to do two more after this. Excellent. Come on, let's keep it, I want to get, uh, very, 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 I'm glad to talk. She is a student, she's also particularly Elsal, uh, autoral, uh, champion. She's getting ready to go to the state, into the state competition in two weeks. Uh, we're getting ready to offer her a scorecard as well and give her some support. Then also we're going to bring her to the national autoral contest. So she had a question, uh, from a huge, uh, it was a huge part.
My question was, I think, was familiar with the queer way spirit because I figured out why we talk about we support diversity. So I'm wondering if you support it and anything that more people and our teachers and superintendents should support, or should be taught to us? Because it's a foundation, it's a foundation of our history, as you said. We've got to learn about explaining all those ugly topics. I want to know if you support anything that is necessary to be taught in our schools.
Actually broke this one down, Jeff, because I didn't want to miss some key factors on it, but I think I tried to. Okay. This is actually a really tough assignment and a hot political topic, right? So originally developed through legal scholarship in the twentieth century, CRT is a concept that aims to explain how discrimination is woven into our laws, policy and system. Thus saying racism is perpetrated into American culture. The theory argues that racism goes beyond individual prejudice and is engraved in the component, component of American society. But personally, it is not ingrained in me or my family. However, I can see the views stemming from older generations that lived through the civil rights movement and have ancestors that have burned back slaves. I can see that. It's extremely different, uh, it's really a difficult conversation because who I, who am I to say it is or isn't? Critics of CRT, however, argue that the movement is discriminatory because it assumes that all white people are racist. And that all people of color are victims. I see issues with it because, again, personally, me nor my family and this society we've come to, or feel that way, excuse me, me or my family, you don't feel that way. Um, our society has come a long way in fifty years. We have to teach and look at our history collectively. Is it right to call Caucasian children racist in school just because they're white? No. Or I think curriculum suggests that parents are just because they're white. So your mom and, you know, my mom and dad are racist because they're white. No, that's not true. Again, what the laws are, I will have to follow. And I would love to understand your take on this and the people who ask this question. Um, I would love to talk later and, and get your take on it anyway. Thank you.
What I can tell you. I'm not racist. My family is mixed about all the different races. I guess we say, I don't think it is that way. I think that auto is the one's history and history of where you've been from. So if that's saying, put that back in the school so you know, because your parents are teaching you, then maybe we need to do that, if that's what you guys are looking. Um, I do know there are a lot of kids that don't have the option to have somebody tell them. This avenue. So. I can't honestly meet each other because I'm not a racist person as far as, to me, you're the same as I am. You're the same as my sister-in-law or my brother-in-law, you know what I'm saying? So, I don't, you know what I mean?
I, well, yeah, I'm going to say that I am for. People understanding each other and really knowing where people come from. And so there's, there's things that I've done in my life. I go to many different seminars, courses, I've done a lot of things. And I think that the black community has a lot to teach the white community and from the experience. And I, I've never been racist, but I used to speed a lot when I was younger. I used to like to drive really fast and I would get pulled over and I would get a ticket. And this is what I realized. This is the, the big difference. So I was a young girl, got pulled over, I thought, huh, what do I say? Should I cry? Should I, you know, I'm like, you know, should I say, my scooter is broken? I was worried about that. I never ever thought that I would be shocked.
Thank, thank, thank you. Um, Diane, you, you, you want to respond to that?
So. My kids, I don't teach them this stuff. I teach them, when I was a young bro, a young boy, very, very upset, you know, he said, sir. Two things in America, don't even worry about. Your merit, your continued character. Throughout my life, nobody stopped me doing anything. That's the same thing I teach my kids. So I believe it's counterproductive to put these kids following these ideals of their kids. Why not just teach them, hey, go home, you son. Don't let your merit and let your continuity and your character speak for itself. And don't worry about any of the rest of the stuff that people got to say. It's divisive. I never grew up thinking white people were racist. I was all, 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 many, around many different people. And everybody respected me for what I stood for and what I presented. So I would say to you, you can do anything you want to do. Anything you want to push them on to, just continue the character, you may.
What's that? From Diane?
Uh, I mean, with Catherine Leach, um, and I also want to be able to help one through more again. Our first preparation for dealing with pornography and school library books, uh, will select committee who does the evaluations. And on the books and then by recommendations, so the superintendent who takes their recommendations across the board, whether or not he acts. Um, and in many cases, these are books that often discuss real life child sabotage, expressed in tiny photographic. And other Florida counties and other states are rejecting these photographic books across the board as being taught children inappropriate. And then county on the other hand, just keep it lost enough because they express real life situations that children should know about, no matter what the language and use discussing. Uh, I want to know which are thoughts on this are and unlongality of it and how they think they should be best handled.
Diane. It defies common sense and that's part of the reason I'm running for school board. Anybody. Announcing common sense, we're looking some of this stuff. So this is really literature that we need in our school system. Now we've got a committee, we've got logs, and at the end of the day, I would say just. Pen those laws on each side in those screens. Might answer to be ninety-nine percent of what you're dealing with in this school board because it violates. So I don't understand how.
All over the house.
Violates state law. It violates common sense.
Everywhere in the house.
It's not really literature or. I don't have the list with me. I have it on my computer, but I'd be more than happy at first. List that's there right now, it's on spreadsheet. So there's, there's plenty that we could discuss on it. But at the end of the day, I'm looking at it from the parents, the majority of the parents, and I'm looking at it from a kid's point of view. Is this really going to take me to the next level? Is this really great stuff to be reading? But we can, I'm more of a, of course, probably be more than that, but there is. Um, that's my take on, it's, it's a common sense issue. It's a legal issue and it should be. The, I don't understand why it's not.
I'm talking about pornography, blatant pornography. I mean, or we're talking, yes. Well. In schools, however, some of these feel like they're being banned or not pornography. Some of them are like cautionary tales and life. Well. Okay, the ban list and it's including like authors like Maya Angelou, Toni Morrison. And I, I just think that looking at things and saying, well, I don't like that perspective. I don't think that we should ever talk about people that are gendered, um. If, when, it depends on the age group. Give a high school student. And I think that that, when it's age appropriate, I think there are things that can learn from it. But pornography itself. Magazine. It works. Yes. Well, okay, what's more, what's more fair? What's more, you know?
And it just kind of talked about the rules of kindergarten and at the end, David doesn't wear pants to school. Running backwards and it shows his forehead from his bottom and that book was taken off. I was a little disappointed in some of those. However, what you're referring to, it, you have to follow law and the law states that those books are inappropriate and they are. Um, if you've listened to any of the board meetings and you hear some of the books that she's reading and other parents are, are reading. I mean, the, the, it's vulgar, um, profanity. You've had the experience of going through that, you, you can explain it in a way possibly without using profanity. Um, and I think a parent once stood up at the board minute, remember, um, a meeting and said. No child that had been sexually abused or trafficked, like, uh, sex trafficked. Wants to relive that story. It causes drama. And the problem that we're having, I know you were saying, um, age appropriate, however, some of these books are in kindergarten through eighth grade schools. And they're stuff that high schoolers really don't even need to be reading. So I do support the books that have been, most of the books that have been removed and we have to follow the law. And the books that have been approved, um, on the board that, hey, that are breaking the law, they're, they're risking. They're risking lawsuit. And honestly, going back to when all of this was presented. If the state made the law or, or made the rules, they really should have had a committee where we send those books to the state and they make the decision. Because it's causing so much drama and taking our focus off of other things that really need attention in our account. Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, um. What, no, I, oh, okay, this is like what year, two thousand twenty-four. You can get, any, any young kid get any on the internet, they can get any kind of pornography available. So what is the big deal about books and libraries? So the books and libraries are paying compared to what you can get on the internet. Let's face it, this is like two thousand twenty-four, okay? Thank you.
We're on a, just.
Question at the same time. You, you can answer that any one you want.
Right, however. It should not be in our schools. You know, we do have families, we, I have a ten-year-old daughter who does not have internet access. Okay, so therefore she cannot access those things you're talking about and I choose not, I choose that as a parent. That's my choice as a parent. And I'm sending her to school in a safe environment and she should not be able to go to the library and pick up a book that talks about. terrible, she has no ideas even happening in this world. At the moment. With illustration. And if I took a picture of that book, say my daughter, check that book out from that media center. I took a picture of that words or the words or, or whatever the illustration is. And I sent a text message to one of my son's friends. He's in, you know, sixth grade. I am.
Finish coming up yet?
Very passionate.
I just agree. Go ahead. No, I agree. They shouldn't be in our schools. Sexual abortion on the word. We're there to educate, math, reading, presentations, not teaching our kids. But I've seen, no.
I mean, one of the things is we do have movies that are rated G, PG, PG thirteen, R. And X, I don't, you know, when you go to a movie theater, you don't bring your kindergarten to an R movie. They won't let you in. And that's just, people are selling tickets. So when you check a book out of the library and you're this tall, five years old, and it's for a high school, rated for a high school student. I don't think that they're going to, they're going to be able to check it out by the library. So you just have to be kind of nice with them.
That's not true. They don't, they don't rate them like that at our home schools. Do not really check out whatever in that library. Making it unsafe.
I see it's a very passionate topic.
There is.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. And I love, I love all of the feedback.
My name is Paul Humm, I run a P program. Uh, my question is for the school board, judge, law enforcement. I know that there are regional about zero tolerance for violence in schools. But obviously law began to win with the school system only coming fully. I would, I addressed an issue with the principal. One parent, there was five people there, the board system, the school system, and the one parent that had two children. I'm going to lay a look to you, with your student mother facing down of people that are dealing with you about your child being bullied. And they kept reiterating the, the, there's now, if you know anything about bullying, you want to become the friend to the bully so they can stop. And I don't know what their experience is, but the basic thing, you're developing the school's that child, there's, uh, that's the direction that you, you can take. So if you're running self-defense or learning these things about how to protect yourself, when you can't find an only out of it but to protect yourself. Where does the knowledge in school take effect? Because what happens is that, what happens is that the school, now I don't say that the child is being bullied, is instigated. So what I want to address is making sure that we have transparency in the school system, law enforcement. And I'm aware of the judge, I'm aware of the juvenile court system. So where does the line stop and begin? So if a parent can get some satisfaction when they say, my child is bullied. They say, well, I don't have enough information. How many times, how many acts of bullying do they have to suffer before you respond back? So, and then what happens? So, and then what happens?
That, that's the question. I understand you trying to explain some, just get a, yeah.
So the question is
The question is, you want to add your last, I'll go with you.
But let me finish. All right. So the thing is, when they get into a situation where they got to defend themselves, master the offense, and they got to protect themselves, they get suspended, in-school suspension and out-school suspension. How many times if you go on the board direct with, uh, board meetings, you know that multiple suspensions get added up to the chance to be rightly not granted. So how many times does that happen before we can transparent also for parents to know what's going on? Because what happens when you get suspended, that's the beginning of the school pipeline to prison. And we don't need that activity occurring without children. So how are we going to deal with that as a board? Question.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, all right. Seth. Seth.
I mean, it should be zero tolerance to bullying and I think parents should know right away. I don't, I don't understand that. I don't know that, so they're not being notified until it's late. I mean, because yeah, the school to prison pipeline is real. And, um, no, I just think that that should, parents totally be notified if their child is suspended. Great. Okay.
I just figured you had a little bit, because I understand that, that's where, my kids are all worn off now, ninety, I don't have to deal with the school board issues anymore. But as a youth court judge and a mentor, I have seen, when I'm sitting in youth court on Monday nights, a lot of the times the cases are about a fight that happened in school. And other jurors are other youths. Other youths sit on the jury and they're the ones who ask the kid who got in trouble, what happened? Why did you hit that boy? Why didn't you, why did you not walk away? And I hear all the stories of, well, that I was bullying my friend and, and how many times they've been in school and out of school suspension before they end up in a youth court, thrown away. And, and we, I like to think that when it gets past what the schools can handle, then they have to bring in the SROs. It is a scary situation because you think of it as a pipeline to prison. But I see it as an opportunity, the one opportunity that I would have as not a member of the school to step in and say, hey, let's stop this process. Because when there is, when it gets past the, the suspension part and then the wall gets involved. We have a great program through the course to make sure that that kid who has been suspended twice is not getting, uh, instant suspension where they're sitting in a classroom not doing anything. They're actually doing community service and they're being jurors for other kids and they're learning how not to get in trouble. And how they can keep themselves out of trouble by doing community service and having good mentors in the community. So where, where the bully, I, yes, you said judge, so you know, I'll, I'll put my two cents in there. There are so many opportunities that are outside of the school when it gets to be too much. Because when you have bullies, they are to teach, no, who's in trouble, the instigator. You may have the system saying, hey, the easiest way to say, well, they're friends again because the bully is not trusting themselves and they're not, you know, um, going to fight against the bully. But then when, you know, there is some kind of a throwdown if something happens, at least that child gets there ready for to explain why they did it and get that opportunity to show them that the system is not it seems working and it seems that there's a pipeline to prison, but there are so many stopgaps that can happen. Try to flip the switch and make sure that kids who do get in trouble because they're sticking up for themselves don't get lost in the system and get to, you know, not be able to assert themselves and do good things in the community. So I really think that, that part of it is turning around when it gets past the point of a school.
Fair.
Sure. So the code of conduct currently is being, um, reevaluated and worked on in our school system and it needs tremendous help. It really does. Um, I think that we need to look at our protocols as to what happens when a behavior happens and it makes sure that it's documented. What we're finding, administrators are in charge of their schools. And depending on sometimes what school you're at, your protocol sometimes is a little different, right? So what we need to do on the school board is to ensure that our administrator and our leaders are all following the same protocol. When a bullying incident happens, it needs to be reported, the parent needs to be notified. And then in an event that a fight occurs, that is documented and then there needs to be protocols that follow that as well. What we're finding with these students that are getting in trouble, we're throwing them in IFS, but we're not addressing their issue. Sometimes it's a mental issue. And they need a guidance counselor to talk to. I would love to see when a child is in IFS or a guidance counselor, for them to have to have a session with a guidance counselor once a week, at least for three weeks, until that guidance counselor can make sure. And unfortunately, we definitely have the need for more guidance counselors for these children, um, because right, we need that. So it's a big push for, for that, in my opinion. Okay, I need to answer the question.
I'll put you in on that because I advocate. I go to the MTSS meetings. And both ladies are quiet in what they had said. But sitting in these meetings, the way the system works in the, in the district, they, they, they don't have the means to handle. And it's easier to say OSS because you have more OSS than you do IFS. And the bully attacks one child. And the other child eventually hasn't had enough and it returns back. Now they won't have Yes, we need to know why this, the original bully. What the, a lot of times that she's, it's a mental health issue. It's a lack of attention, lack of love, uh, jealousy. Right. So we have of that bully to address it so they don't have that pipeline to prison. We need to stop it now. And the best fix right now is to kick everybody out of school. I have worked on a lot of things and the way this, this goes all the way to state, you swing, you're out, period. But you can only take so much before you defend yourself. So what happens a lot of times is focus. But the one who tried to get away or eventually didn't swing back because they've had enough time, time to think, you know, react, be a beat on, we've lessened their time. Instead of ten days, they get three days. But documentation and we're not getting I have been to every single school here. Not one school doesn't say, the protocol does need to be set. She's right on me. We need to have the same guidelines across the board. The same punishment across the board. We're not getting in the best, the easiest quick fix that for administration is to make a act. Wrong thing to do. Number one, we don't have the facilities here in this county to take care of the child. Yeah. So we need the guidance counselors. We need more mental health in there. And we need more active members in the community, whether it's a church, it's non-profits, to help these. Because a lot of times, and not to single out anybody, it's a single parent children that this is happening to. Yeah. So we need guidelines that are straight across the board. We need mental health. And the same because it seems to be the same children over and over and over that is being repeated offenders.
All right. So into my end of our section is about twenty or five. We still need to be tight in it.
We are, we are winding down. Get ready, buy a round of applause. This is an opportunity for all of us to, uh, share and, and then participate. And then we're going to have, uh, one last question from the audience. So prepare your questions. Then we're going to have, a lot, each candidate. Another sixty-seven things, closing pitch. On whatever you want to say, on your thoughts, your emotions, your happiness, every, every candidate has a six, seven. We'll find it, it's paid all the time. All right. Yes ma'am, you'll be in time.
I'll be the timekeeper. That way it'll ensure that we have a fair, but it's difficult, which they will, you know.
If God need to run to the, listen, if God need to run to the car, you can run to the car and get your wallet. We do, we take cash, we take checks. You can also donate to give a five, pay the pound, mail to mail.